Have to turn around. Okay. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item is introductions. Rashida, would you like to start?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. Rashida Kamara, County Connection.
Deanna Perry, Tri-Delta Transit.
Michael Dowgeli, East County Rider.
Kim Ridgway, AC Transit, East Bay Para Transit.
And I'm Janet Abelson, West County consumer from El Cerrito.
Bridget Cooney, City of El Cerrito.
Belinda Graham, City of San Pablo.
Lori Reese Brown, City of Richmond.
Lisa Hammond, Choice in Aging.
And one person, I can't actually see the name tags because they're, and there's... Could everybody kind of tilt it slightly so I could see it? Thank you. Helps a lot. The... So the next item on the agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. And is there anyone who would like to make a comment not on the agenda? Member of the public? I don't think so. Okay. Then we move on to the roster. Peter?
It's just there, Peter.
Okay, thank you. And the meeting schedule, same thing?
Yep.
Anybody have anything? Okay. And then we have a summary of the actions from May 22nd. We don't vote on that, though, right?
Yes.
We do vote on that? No, no, okay. Okay, so it's there. And then there's a list of the expiration of terms. Your information. Then we all turn the page. And next, we have a special election for the... Did I miss something?
Yeah, so for the expiration of members, we have basically Michael is the only one who's currently needs to re-up. So he would need to express his interest in staying on the council, and then we would all vote to keep him. Or you would all vote to keep him. I won't vote.
Oh, I see. So the expiration of terms is for Action?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the only Action?
Yep.
Okay. So, Michael, you said you want to stay?
If you'll have me, if you'll still have me after all these years.
Okay. And so do we need to make a motion, then? Or there could be other people, I suppose, if we were so lucky? Anybody want to make a motion? Yes, please, Lori?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote to for Michael... Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Dowgeli.
Dowgeli of East County Connection as our next vice chair of the coordinating council, Para Trust Coordinating Council.
First, we have to elect him to stay on the PCC. His term is expiring.
We have the motion.
You have the motion?
Yeah.
I second that.
Did I say that right?
Yeah, we're moving to keep Michael on the council. Seconded by...
Ridgway.
Okay. Any discussion?
She made the motion. I second it.
Okay. Are we clear on that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So now we can move on to the part about vice chair, right?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want to now say what you said about vice chair last time? He was...
That Michael sent us an email, I believe, Fifi?
Yeah.
That he would be interested in being the vice chair, if so nominated and accepted.
I nominate Michael for vice chair.
And you don't need a second for... What? You have a second? Okay, yeah. What? Shall we vote? Somebody else could run, too.
Anybody else?
Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any no votes? Congratulations, Michael.
Although I would like to admit that I sent the email at four in the morning, but I'm only kidding.
Okay, so now we go on to the main part of the agenda, which has to do with the program claim forms. So we're on item number six, which is the... You want to discuss that, Peter?
These are the claim forms for fiscal year 1920. All of the operators, with the exception of the City of Richmond, have submitted the claim forms and have them been reviewed by the PCC Subcommittee. And they have all brought them forward for recommendation to go to our board for approval, and then we can get an update from Lori on where Richmond's at with their...
So this item is the...
So this is a carryover from the last meeting where we didn't have a quorum.
Richmond is item number seven, and this is item number six.
Yeah, and Richmond is actually just an update on their, on their...
Okay.
What's going on.
Okay.
We did get their claims, and we sent those out to the Subcommittee for review, but we haven't gone beyond that point yet.
So back to item number six, then. Are there any comments or questions about the operators listed on that list for that? Michael?
As a member of the Subcommittee, I really would like to congratulate both CCTA, the Board, and the people who do this. I mean, I just, I'm so impressed with the amount of work that goes into these kind of claims and the hard work that people do on the behalf of the public transit people. Sometimes I think we just look at the numbers, and I was really impressed with the Subcommittee. You know, Lisa, I mean, just going through these things and just noticing little things that need to be dealt with, and I'm just so impressed with everybody's efforts, so...
Anything else from anyone else? Okay. Are we ready to vote?
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims in item number six.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Lisa seconded by Michael to approve the claims in item number six. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? One abstention from Kim. And with that, it is approved. So now we'll move on to item number seven, which is the City of Richmond update. And so you're going to introduce that, Peter, or just Lori? You'll do it?
Lori's fine.
Lori's fine? Okay.
Well, thank you, Peter. Thanks, everyone. So as an update to the City of Richmond's R Transit Program and Services, we recently submitted the claim form for 1819 and 1920. And in those claim forms, we tried to be as detailed as possible to provide enough information and transparency on where our program and how the program looks to date. We have since been able to, since our last conversation with the PPC, I mean, the PCC Subcommittee and the PCC Committee, we basically have looked in detail as to, you know, there were some questions that were raised at the Subcommittee level. Quite a few questions that we had in writing, and as we went through those questions, we, and after we talked with our legal counsel and spoke with our risk management, we had decided that we could basically give enough details to not get us in any trouble with, you know, some of our prior workers who had pretty much transitioned on to different areas in their career. One of the challenges that we dealt with, as I mentioned earlier, were our drivers, having drivers who were on disability but still employed and having to work with the City of Richmond's Para Transit program in another capacity. Since, within the last two years, we have been operating with, you know, two drivers and one internal personnel, one staff person, administrative analyst, in fact. And so our administrative aide or analyst for Para Transit, she does driving part-time. And so when we looked at all of these programs and what our service area and our service needs, we had assessed and determined that we needed to really improve our services by having additional backup drivers. And so we looked at Lyft, as many of you know, we started talking about Lyft a long time ago. But here we are in this process where we finally have a contract in place. We are now outreach into all of the nonprofit organizations. At some point, we'll connect with WICTEC on their travel training. We have nonprofit organizations that we've been able to contract with. Those contracts go before our city council this come next Tuesday, in fact, on the 25th. And we hope that what we would get from that, in fact, this is why we're contracting with them, are community-based organizations, is to ensure that they coordinate with a travel training program to do outreach for Para Transit services. That being said, we've also had a, in conjunction with that, we've also had a RFP released for another service provider, transportation service provider. Went through the whole interview process. That's now on council's agenda for their consideration the second week of July, for them to approve the contract as recommended with this transportation firm. The firm that we're recommending is TransMetro Incorporated. Some of you may have heard of TransMetro, I'm not sure, but they've done work for us in the past for our shuttle service, and we're going to be using them now for ambulatory and non-ambulatory transportation services to extend our evening hours and beyond what we currently do. At one point, we had mentioned that we would only handle the ambulatory rides with our clients, our existing, our transit service would handle that. But now we're serving all clients. We're not going to limit it to just our ambulatory clients. We will have, we will serve both ambulatory and non-ambulatory during our current service hours that we've been doing for the past couple of, three decades or so. But we would use those other service providers like Lyft and TransMetro provided the council approves their contract in July to provide the backup service for us. That's the best way we could handle this. Before, we never mentioned it like that. We were always separating what we would do with Lyft versus what our current service would provide because we were in a quandary, if I can use that word, with our disabled workers. But now that they have, they're going for the city, they've been going for some time, we're not at risk of mentioning and doing the program this way. So I'm able to answer any questions, should you have any?
Yeah.
TransMetro will handle non-ambulatory?
They're going to handle both ambulatory and non-ambulatory.
And Lyft is just ambulatory?
Right, and they will be, we will use them as pretty much on-call as needed so that we will not have to, hopefully not have to cancel or deny any rides. We're going to still have the same service of hours of operation that we've always had, continue to use our transit service like we always have. We're not making any specific changes to that like we had proposed before. We're just going to continue with the limited number of drivers. We're not able to, we don't have the financial means to hire any new drivers, and this is the reason as to why we are contracting with these two firms, both Lyft and TransMetro.
Rashida?
The question I had is regarding the on-call. Are you going to still keep it as a core service, or are you going to make it more like a rider's choice? Why would you defer to the Lyft program? Why would you refer to the Lyft program as a backup?
Well, yeah, I probably mentioned the word backup, but I will say as, pretty much as a core service. If those who feel comfortable with taking Lyft and wanting to use Lyft are more than welcome to use it, they'll receive travel training on how to, how to use Lyft, how to, you know, the necessity of having a smartphone and whatever else they need to use Lyft. Some of our seniors and disabled persons are current, who are able to use Lyft, they're currently using Lyft now, some of them. But for those who wish to use that service, will receive the training if they, should they need that, to assist them with that. Yes, Lisa? Oh, I'm sorry.
So for the, so you said that it's the same hours of operation. Do you mean it's the same hours of operation for our transit and Lyft? Or Lyft will operate as Lyft normally does, which is a 20...
Lyft will operate as Lyft normally does, is 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service. Our service hours for our transit have always been from 8:30 until 5:00. The operation, the operational use of our contracted firm, TransMetro, will handle both ambulatory and non-ambulatory rides, and they will extend the hours. They're proposing to extend the hours to 8:00 PM. So they'll work as early as 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. No weekend service, though.
Oh, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
No weekend service for all of them or some of them?
For the weekend, no weekend service for anyone, you know, for the R Transit program and the contractor that would be handling both ambulatory and non-ambulatory clients. There will be weekend service for those who need it through Lyft, if they want weekend service, because Lyft operates 24 hours a day. So they're going to continue their service hours as they always have for anyone, 24/7. But our hours will remain the same like they always have for the, since we've been a Para Transit program or operator.
So it'd be whatever you, I can't remember what this, you said the starting time was?
Our service hours, our transit service hours currently and have always been, 8:30 until 5:00. But with the contractor that we have that's going to also be assisting as needed, will be from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Lisa?
So Lori is the... Shoot, I just forgot what I was going to say. Hold on, let me look.
Well, if you think of it, I'm just...
I have a question while you're thinking about it. Have you costed out how much this would cost to do what you just said? Or...
We have, what I've just mentioned, we have a contract in place with TransMetro for $600,000 over two years, over a two-year period. We have, we anticipate that some of those monies can come from the Measure J funds. You know, it's still a lot more inexpensive than what we had, you know, staff with the benefits and things that we had to pay. But, yeah, we have costed out pretty much. And so we have identified our funding sources, sources to include our general fund, which is money coming from an agreement with Chevron, and our, the Measure J funds.
Lisa?
Thank you. I wrote it down. So is the information that you just talked about prior when you were explaining about the new contract, et cetera, and how it's all going to work, is this in the 19, is this referenced in the 1920 claim?
It's for the 1920 claim, yes.
Okay, so is it in the claim that you just submitted?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One other really quick point of clarification. So for those who want to use Lyft must have a smartphone, but if they don't have a smartphone, they can just opt into one other services.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yes, Mary?
Just if you want the information, GoGoGrandparent, for example, is available for non-smartphone users, but there is a little extra charge.
According to friends of mine who use it, it's not a little extra charge, it's a significant, yeah, it's expensive. They, they don't like to use it because of the cost.
Well, no, if you can work directly with Lyft or Uber, of course, that's cheaper. And then if, in the case of Lafayette, we had a bequest that we're using to subsidize the cost of the GoGoGrandparent ride. So we're paying 50% of the cost, up to $50. So it's just another option.
I'm just saying, like, on the, I'll call it the open market, you know, if you just, if you do have a cellphone and you don't have any of our programs, then I have friends who regularly don't take rides because they're blind and they need that assistance, but it's too expensive, that the regular GoGoGrandparent.
The regular GoGoGrandparent. And I did ask them, I told them about how people were opting to use Uber Pool. And so they did, GoGoGrandparent did mention to me that they hoped to have, hope to be able to offer Uber Pool as part of, as part of their rides. And that would bring the cost down substantially because Uber Pool is much, much less expensive.
Okay. Any other questions from, yes, Michael?
And it's just kind of a general question, just to understand, because I have, I now have a kind of a smartphone. I used to have a dumb phone, but now I have a kind of a smartphone. It uses Wi-Fi, but I can't download apps. So, for example, I wouldn't be able to use the Uber or Lyft services because you have to have a smartphone, right? And, but what's this other thing about you can call somebody and then they'll call and then you have to pay a surcharge?
That's, that's ArriveRides is one option, and GoGoGrandparent is another option. And they arrange the ride for you and monitor it, and they make sure the drivers are willing to work with older adults.
Okay. And who do you pay? You pay the ArriveRides, for example?
Or the GoGoGrandparent.
And then they pay the Uber or Lyft, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I would assume that, that's probably true, but it might also be directly handled by Uber or Lyft because everything's done at the time of the ride in terms of the charging of the cost.
Okay. But they would explain, for example, if I called ArriveRides, how the system works?
Yes, they would.
Okay. Thank you.
They're very person-friendly, centered, person-centered friendly.
So are we done with the questions? I have a question, but it's of Peter. So we need to schedule the Subcommittee meeting? And... Okay, so we're thinking we would do it sooner rather than later, I assume, right? So when were you thinking?
Well, we have a September July meeting, so we have our meeting third Monday in July, PCC meeting, so we need to get it done before then.
Before, I couldn't quite hear you.
Before our July 3rd, Monday, not July 3rd, our July PCC meeting, July 15th, we have our regular PCC meeting. And so we would want to...
It doesn't have to go to the planning committee?
Richmond will come to the PCC first, and then it'll go to the planning committee and the Board.
This is the PCC? I'm confused. We're already here?
Right.
Oh, but this, but we're not seeing it, the app, okay, we don't see, I get it.
The Subcommittee.
Okay, and then we have to have a special, actually, it's not a, this is, is this a special PCC meeting? Okay. And then our next PCC meeting is the one that's on the same day as the planning committee? It's after? Pardon?
So we could, we could take it straight to the Board? We don't need to go to the PCC? To Richmond? So we could go to the Board?
This is the PCC. We don't need to go...
I'm sorry. We don't need to go to the PCC.
Planning.
Correct.
You mean, we don't need, we don't have to go to the planning?
Correct.
Right, okay.
We could go to the Board.
Okay. So that'll...
The goal would be to get it to the Board in July.
Which would be the third...
Seventeenth, yeah. So we'll...
Third Wednesday of the month.
The PCC will be on Monday. We'll have the agenda all ready to go.
Same week as the Board meeting? Okay. And before that date, we need to have the Subcommittee?
Correct. So we'll probably try and schedule something for next week.
Okay. Which would be matter, the members of that committee plus Richmond?
Yeah.
Next week, you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay. Could we try to do that while we're all here? Maybe after, I think the meeting is almost over, and we could just try to schedule it then and while Lori's here? And do it at a time that we can all do it. Okay. So any other questions? This is not for Action, right?
Correct.
Okay. So now we'll move on to the SRA C report, and there hasn't been a regular SRA C meeting, however, there was a training on ethics that we all did. And the next item then is item nine, which is the Senior Mobility Action Council. Is that you, Lisa? It's Mary? Okay.
What we're working on these days is setting up a symposium for 2020, probably in the fall, on the topic of not, you retired, now what? You know, planning for your retirement, looking at some of the realities of retirement, talking about things you can do to stay healthy and to stay engaged in the community. So we've been working with the Advisory Council on Aging members to set up the overall agenda for that symposium in 2020. Then our next step will be to decide on a venue and who the speakers will be. Besides that, what the Senior Mobility Action Council has been doing has been having a speaker each month, and I believe Rashida is our June speaker on the County Connection. So we've been, Tri Delta was not too long ago. So we've been, Tri Delta was, not too long ago, we had a speaker from Tri Delta, what is her name?
Jeanne?
Thank you, Jeanne. Jeanne and also Ken Gray spoke at that meeting. So I've been trying to make sure that we are all updated with what various transportation outfits are doing, and San Pablo presented. So it's just to keep us all better informed on how things work at different transit agencies. We meet on the fourth Monday of the month at 9:00 A.M. It's a non-Godly hour, so, I think that's it.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Any future agenda items?
So I think for July, we'll do an item on the Transportation Expenditure Plan that the authority is working on putting together. I think that would be of interest to the PCC.
Anything else, does anybody have? So we could probably spend quite a bit of time, then of that meeting time, on this, right? Okay, okay, is that okay with everyone? Super. Then, does anyone have any news to share? Seeing, oh, Rashida?
Yes, actually, I do. So December, County Connection Link released an RFP for their paratransit services. First Transit, under different names, have had that contract for about 29 years, literally since the Mayflower landed. And we put it out to bid, we had six, six proposers, and after a panel interview, in which Peter participated in the panel interview, First Transit did not retain the contract by an overwhelming majority. Transdev happened to be the one that was selected. So we took it to the board upon staff's recommendation. They approved for my general manager, Rick Ramisier, to enter into a contract with Transdev to run their paratransit program starting July 1st. So for the past 60 days or so, we've been going through a transition. This is quite different, like I said, 29 years, they've had one contract. This particular contract, although it focuses on our core standardized paratransit service, usually with a contractor, a scheduling software, in our particular case, County Connection actually has the building, procures the vans, and the contractor normally just brings in the dispatching reservation staff and the drivers. Our recent RFP was a little bit different. We put in check and balances, accountability measures that didn't exist before, plus we had inquired about transportation partnerships and user-friendly technologies. Up until now, we don't even have tablets or MDTs, which are mobile data terminals, or digital dispatching devices in our vehicles to run our paratransit service, which is, well, archaic, to say the least, and puts a huge strain on the operators and the dispatchers trying to manage the service, but most importantly, it just, it literally holds our passengers hostage when you don't have the type of technology and skill to run paratransit services. So with the new, and I'm going to be presenting that actually at SMAC, that'll be the first jumping off point to talk about the new things that are going to be happening. So not only are we going to be rolling out tablets or digital dispatching units into the vehicles, our partner, Transdev, has actually partnered with a TNC that's also a DBE to be providing dedicated vehicles and non-dedicated vehicles to our evenings, nights, weekends, and peak trips. We have about a 200-square-mile service area, and there are just some folks that, when you put them into the mix, end up having really long ride times. And those really long ride times over the span of our service area, when you're driving on 680, 24, 4, really degrades the service. So this poor on-time, and even worse for the agency, the productivity is so low, it's costing us quite a bit of money. So as a result, and not to mention that the drivers, we had no sustainability at all when it came to drivers. Our turnover rate was like 30% because the, the pay scale for the drivers was really poor. So when we went out on this RFP, we told them a couple of things we needed. We needed user-friendly technologies to put the rider back in control. We wanted transportation partnerships. We wanted them to have decent wages, livable wages for our drivers and, and staff. And, and so they've brought all of these things, they've brought all of these things together for us, and so we're going to be rolling that out July 1st. So we're currently going through a transition. And some of the user-friendly technologies include, include smartphones for those who are willing to use it, and on the smartphone, you can book, cancel ride, and even view trips where you don't have to call the call center, which is a big problem, because we have long hold times, and so this prevents all those hold times. You get to stay, you get to stay in control without being tied to, and, you know, trying to figure out whether that person is telling you the truth on the phone. 10 minutes turns into another 10 minutes, turns into another 10 minutes. With the vehicles, with their tablets, which we're also going to be rolling out within the 90 days of the startup, and the GPS locator, you'll be able to tell from your phone that your driver really is 90 minutes away, so if you, or 30 minutes away. So if you want to run and go use the bathroom and not be tied, I mean, it just puts you back to just living your life and not being held hostage. I'm so excited about some of the changes that are coming. I'm really, really excited, and I hope that it just rolls out the way it was meant to be rolled out. We know we're going to have hiccups. We know that this is completely new and completely different, but we're really excited that the platform and the foundation for these types of changes have been set by way of the board, by way of us opening it up through the bid, so that we are afforded the opportunity for the first step in that direction. So frankly, even if we have hiccups, we know that we're there to work through those hiccups and that we're just going to build on it for it to go ahead and get better. That's the first thing we're doing. Lisa, do you want to talk about the second thing we're doing?
Sure.
Since you're in it live?
So we have a pilot program, I've mentioned this before, with County Connection. We have a memorandum of understanding with County Connection. We have an agreement with Silver Ride, and we have about a dozen of our participants that come to Mount Diablo Center. Some in our regular program, some in our Russian program, some in our Alzheimer's program, who are now using Silver Ride sedans to get to Mount Diablo Center, some for the same reasons that Rashida already mentioned, which are really long trips, or trips that were just difficult to do, trips where the participants just had a really hard time being on a bus for an hour or longer due to medical conditions, physical or mental disabilities. And so we kicked it off a week ago. Last week, we had a few bugs to get out, but I think we've adjusted it, and it seems to be going well. Our participants really like it. It's three people to a carpool plus a driver. So that driver makes one trip that's a little further away from Mount Diablo Center and brings those three participants in, and then goes out and does a closer-in run with three participants. So each driver, we have two drivers, Ron does those two trips, Cynthia does those two trips, and we're bringing about a dozen people. Depending on their schedules, we have a lot of different schedules at Mount Diablo Center. Some people come every day, some come Monday, Wednesday, some come Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. Anyway, trying to figure that all out was kind of a challenge, but it seems to be going really well. We've gotten a lot of positive response. The one thing that was difficult was there were a few people that we could not get in the sedans with Silver Ride every day that they come to Mount Diablo Center, and that's been a little bit difficult for some, where they have a combination of Link rides and Silver rides. So we're trying to work on that. But all in all, we've gotten really positive feedback. Our drivers are great. Our participants see the same driver, unless they're on vacation or sick, every day, and that consistency is really important, and it gets them to the program on time and, and much, much faster. So I'll report back once we actually have some, some numbers, but so far, so good.
What is Silver Ride?
Well, Silver Ride is a door-through-door service. They have drivers who are trained, have more training for people with disabilities, for seniors and the issues that seniors and people with disabilities have. They can transport wheelchair, walker, they'll help you, they'll help, they'll put the wheelchair in the car, they'll put the walker in the car, they'll get the walker out, they'll bring it over to the car, they'll help you get out of the car and into our center and vice versa, and into the home on the other way. So it's door-through-door service, and they already exist, similar to ArriveRides, GoGoGrandparent, but this is a new, this is a new partnership. They haven't done this kind of a partnership with a transit agency in the past that I know of. Rashida?
No, they have not, but they do run a, they do run a program with CEI, which is Center for Elder's Independence, where they provide quite a number of trips for them. Usually, the participants that go to those social, it's a PACE program, so it's a program for all-inclusive care for the elders program. So when they bring them to these facilities where they receive social interactions, they sometimes pick them up from these facilities and take them out to their doctor's appointments and either bring them back to the facility or take them home. So it's kind of like an all-inclusive care. So this one, though, unlike all the other TNCs that are out there, the reason why this was such a good partnership are they were able to meet our insurance requirements, our ADA driver training requirements, our drug and alcohol program requirements, and our safety training and accident reporting requirements, which is very important when you're running ADA paratransit services. So being that, you know, we were going to be cutting a check, and this is the type of service that ADA paratransit users were used to getting, it was important for us that we didn't deviate too far off from that model in order for them to do it. So this seemed to be a perfect fit. But like Lisa says, it's a pilot. We're going to be gathering information together and see what the pros and cons of it are all about, but it's clear, like the Tri Deltas of the world, trying out Lyft and Uber, and Richmond trying out Lyft and Uber, that providing core paratransit services, especially when there's not that much change in just the ADA law itself, but there's a change in the demographic, there's a change in the, in the needs of individuals with seniors and individuals with disabilities, that we have to be kind of creative and plug holes in the gaps in services so that it can be accessibility for, if not all, but definitely for most. I mean, we've just got to put our thinking caps on when it comes to trying to be as flexible as possible with the services that we offer within the confines and parameters in which we have to offer them.
So does it provide, I don't know who to answer the question of, of the two of you, does it provide the rights for people in non-collapsible wheelchairs?
It could. We, we don't have anyone coming to our program that's using it for the pilot that, that's in a, that's in a non-collapsible wheelchair. We do have some.
So they don't, what kind of vehicle do they use?
Currently, they're using, the two vehicles that have been assigned for the pilot are sedans and an SUV, a sedan and an SUV. Part of the training, if needed, are transferring the individual and collapsible wheelchairs. They could actually transfer, fold it up, and take the wheelchair. As part of this program, though, if there became a need where somebody was actually selected or signed up for the pilot that actually uses a wheelchair, they do have access to a wheelchair-accessible van.
Okay, when you say wheelchair, what you mean is non-collapsible?
Correct.
Like, in other words, like, something like I use, for example?
Correct.
Which would not fit in a sedan?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mary?
A couple of years ago, when Ty Boyle was working for them, I think their cost was like $60 an hour. Who is able to pay for this?
Under our pilot, for this, because of the guaranteed amount of trips, we have negotiated almost a 50% reduction.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Any more questions?
I'm trying to be nice to everybody, so that they can, I'm trying to be nice. Help us out here, we need this pilot, what can you do for us? So like, for now, it's a, it's a pilot, and, you know, they're trying to get their foot through the door, so we went back and forth for about nine months. Yeah.
Good luck. Good luck. Did somebody have their hand up? I thought I saw someone, guess not. Okay, are we all done with our news to share? That was a pretty big one. Okay, then I think we are ready for adjournment to July 15th, and when we look forward to the Richmond claim, and this will be the magic time, right?
And we're going to look at our...
We are going to state during that committee exactly what I stated today, and this is more specific questions.
And we're going to try to set up the subcommittee meeting, Janet?
Right.
Since, I think we're all here.
Right, we, we said after the meeting.